Ledger legions to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Graham Cuson.
Here.
Johnson, absent. John Francois.
Here.
Summers, absent. Witt.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondence?
No, there is no correspondence this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address this council, please step forward.
Hello, good morning, um, good day. My name's Alexi Fernandez, and I founded Bernie Sanders Club in Sony Orange. This year, in June 15, the common council had a public hearing regarding traffic on Highland Avenue. I checked data, and it stop signs, they don't seem like a good, a speed deterrent, as counterintuitive as it seems that first sign. But it seems like the first steps that we should be trying to do is maybe some slow signs, because the data on that isn't definitive in any way. But that's besides the point. Traffic on Highland isn't even a real issue to begin with. I mean that the police chief requested the assistance of state police to help with the problem, but state police had to pull out, because there wasn't enough activity to justify them to stay. So, we go back to the state police, and we added additional streets. And still, they had to pull out, because they're just, the volume of speakers wasn't there. I also want to quote the police chief's words during the public hearing. "Sometimes perceptions such as the people who live in the area may not coincide with the actual data that can be gathered through analytical methods and through actual enforcement." Unquote. The question I want to ask today is, why spend more taxpayers' money on Highland when we literally have streets falling apart and homes being condemned, in case you haven't noticed? I think the answer is, there seems to be a double standard. We have the FBI and DOJ refusing the press charges against a presidential candidate and their gross negligence. We have the Supreme Court overturning governor's bribe charges, and appeal courts overturning mayor's corruption charges. Yet, I can't beat a traffic infraction ticket because of this doubled standard in place. For them, the standard is beyond a reasonable doubt, and intent has to be proved. But for us, the standard is more likely than not. Before I leave, I want to thank cops everywhere, including the Middletown PD. I do wish that they would reflect the population that they serve, and that they wear body cameras for their own protection. My father is an officer in NYPD, and I experienced the effects on how hard it can be to be a police officer. Police everywhere deserve a raise and less overtime for them to relax and spend time with their families, because family is what truly matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, report to department heads. DPW Commissioner.
Popular demand that I cut it short tonight, so I will, I will cut it short. We started our milling and repaving program for the city streets, and we did Willow Street and other sections. We're going to continue to mill into the end of this week and early next week, and do the prep work for the paving, which is supposed to take place on July 18. Another project we're working on is drainage project up in Roosevelt. We're doing it with our own forces. It should be done tomorrow, completed tomorrow. And generating revenue from the wastewater treatment plant, we generated about forty, over $42,000. So far, it's over, it's $245,000 we have generated in revenue. If we, remainder of the six months of the year, if we repeat what we did last year, we will exceed half a million dollar in revenue. With that, if you have any questions?
All Rex.
Just for the public, is the list available online of what roads are being milled and paved, so that they can?
Yes, yes. The list, the schedule, the order, everything is online. City of Middletown, middletown-ny.com.
Thank you, Jacob. Recreation?
I too will be short tonight. You had the Stars and Stripes Saturday, great showing up there. Before that event, there was also a party in the park that was held by the rec department. We had a few hundred people up there participating, dancing in the park. The kids really having a good time. So, I want to thank all the agencies and volunteers that came up there, and also the staff. Our pools are open, our playgrounds are open. We are serving lunches in 10 locations. Please check with the recreation department if you're in need of that service. It's just nice for the kids to be out in the park. Again, teenagers working and handing out all the lunches. Our pools are open, they are busy. It is going well. A reminder to the public that street clothes cannot be worn in the pool, and also that the street clothes cannot be on the pool deck. So, you need some sort of swimwear, or dryware, or fit-dry, or nylon, or mesh, in order to be in the pool. The skate park bids have come in. Rayland and myself have met with some residents. We'll be meeting soon with the mayor, and with Jacob and Rich Gerton, and we'll probably be moving forward pretty soon with getting a contractor to start that whole process. So, it's very exciting. I want to thank the residents that have stepped forward and gave us a lot of input and a lot of help. It's greatly appreciated. And lastly, just a little bit of a shout-out to the Parks Department. It's a busy time of the year for everybody. We have a very small group. These guys are keeping the mowing, the garbage, the pools are ready, they're moving the wagons around, they're lining the ball fields, they're mowing the grass, and it doesn't go unnoticed. We really appreciate it, and things are looking really good out there. So, thank you to the entire staff, our office staff, our parks staff, and all of our counselors and lifeguards out there that are working really hard with the public. And if anybody from the public has any concerns or questions, please give us a call at the recreation department. I'll be happy to help you with whatever I can. So, thank you.
Any questions for Chris? Colin Kleiner?
Chris, the two banks of portable lights that they had after the fireworks, they were a big help this year. I don't know whose idea that was, but I wanted to give them credit.
Yep, I think that mostly came from DPW in the bid district, but that park is really nice using the banks of lights, plus the ball field lights coming on after the event. That's very good. I also want to quickly thank Mid-City Transit, and also the Kiwanis Club for donations of camperships to kids. Again, it takes a whole village, you know, to raise a child, and this city does it really well. So, thank you to the Kiwanis and Mid-City, too.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, Corporation Council.
Good evening. With respect to the skate park, I've been tasked to look at some of the legal ramifications for some of the proposers, and I'll be reporting to the Board of Estimant when that comes up. Second, just a point of information for you. You may recall some years ago, when Osaki went for a liquor license downtown, the common council passed a resolution requesting that a hearing be held, number one, because there are other full liquor places within 500 feet. And the council requested that the SLA impose a time restriction on the sale of alcoholic beverages to midnight during the week and 1:00 on weekends. And they granted that. Well, we have new owners, and we just got notice that there is another application for a full liquor license for the new owners. So, I just want to let the council know that I will be sending a letter to the SLA saying we won't be at the hearing, but we'll just repeat what has been done before and request the same type of restriction as had been done before. Third, we do have a contract of sale that has been signed, and a down payment received on the old Flanagan Building, so I just want to let you know. And when that gets to a closing, I'll let you know of that as well. Any questions?
Any questions for Rich? Thank you, Rich. City Clerk?
I have nothing this evening.
Any questions for John? Okay, public hearings.
We have two public hearings tonight. Public hearing of proposed two-lot subdivision for 48 Franklin, and 2 to 4, 8, 10, 12, 14, and 14, 14 and a half, Union Street. I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the City of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 5th, on or as near 8:00 PM as possible, Common Council Chamber, 2nd floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision for 4 to 8 Franklin, 2 to 4, 8, 10, 12, 14, and 14 to 14 and a half, Union Street, Section 31, Block 1, 9 through 15. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. This is signed by John Sinamcek, Clerk of the Common Council, City of Middletown. This was published in the Times-Held Record on June 27th and June 28th, and also on our city website.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open.
And Mr. Body, just for the record, you have the mailings.
I do.
Could you please give them to Karen?
I have the certificate of mailing here.
Thank you.
President Rodriguez, members of the council, my name's Peter Body, I represent Unisal Soccer. With me tonight is Carlos Solano, the owner, and his son. And basically, we are taking seven lots that do not conform to the current zoning. We're proposing to do a two-lot subdivision. One lot, the smaller lot, will consist of the existing midport building and the building to be built next to it. The other lot is the remainder of the lands. And that's our application this evening.
Anyone from the public have any questions? Any board members have any questions? All Kleiner?
Just very quickly, because you answered this in our committee meeting, so we heard this, but for the public, didn't hear it, why you wanted two lots rather than to combine it into a single lot?
Yes, somewhere down the road, many, many years from now, when Mr. Solano perhaps would like to consider selling this project to someone else, it might not be feasible for someone to buy the entire project as it stands. So, our thought process was to have two lots, and if necessary, break it into two lots and sell it separately. That's not his intention. His intention is to build the indoor soccer field, the outdoor soccer field, and the buildings as presented before the planning board with the site plan that we presented and will be going back to after this subdivision has been concluded. So, that's looking many, many years down the road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I have a motion to close the public hearing. All move. Massey, second. Burr, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
We have a second public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Don. Second public hearing is for the purpose of considering a request by Citizens Telecommunications Company of New York for a cable franchise to offer cable video service in the City of Middletown. I will read the public hearing notice that the City of Middletown, New York, will hold a public hearing on July 5th at 8:00 PM at City Hall, 16 James Street, Middletown, New York, for the purpose of considering a request by Citizens Telecommunications Company of New York, as the, also Frontier Communications of New York, Frontier Communications, for a cable franchise to offer cable video service in the City of Middletown. A copy of the proposed franchise agreement may be inspected at the Office of the City Clerk, Room 12, at City Hall, 16 James Street, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, or on the city website, or at the offices of Frontier Communications. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed franchise agreement, and this is by order of the common council. It was signed by John Sinamcek, Clerk of the Common Council. This was published in the Times-Held Record on June 27th and June 28th, and also on our city website.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deb Bogdansky. I am the local general manager here with Frontier Communications, covering our market in the Hudson Valley. I'll take just one quick second to introduce my colleagues that are with me this evening. Pat Amendola, who handles our communications team. Jan Vandecar, who is the manager for our New York regulatory team. Jack Phillips, who is the manager for our regulatory overseeing our Vantage franchise agreements. Tom Weckeser is a local area manager here. Sue McDermott is our regional manager for engineering, who is here also. Elena Kilpatrick is our SVP, General Manager for New York, and she is here this evening. And then Kevin Smith is our Senior Vice President of Business Development for the East Region. Some of these individuals will join me in our presentation as well. Very quickly, I just wanted to highlight Frontier Communications. Your communications as a company has some key elements that have built our success over the years. And here, we've highlighted some of our key elements that we look to serve our communities with. First of all, we put our customers first. Second of all, is our local engagement. Locally here, we have points of contact, people that we can reach out to, our customers can contact on a regular basis if there's any issues or concerns. And again, when we talk about our commitment to our employees and to our workforce, one of the areas that we do, and we're very proud of highlighting, is our commitment to our veterans. Frontier Communications as a company has been recognized for a number of areas in terms of our very, very strong commitment to make sure that our veterans are within our workforce, and that we serve the veteran community as a whole. In the local area market, one other additional information that I did want to share with you, here in the Hudson Valley, we currently employ through Frontier Communications just under 300 individuals. In the City of Middletown, at our local area office in John Street, we were able to increase that workforce a little over 32% in the past year, as we added 16 new positions to our consultants for our call center. That is as a result of some recent acquisitions that we're going to talk a little bit about When we look at Frontier Communications, this is a visual of what we look like today across the country, and you can see our various regions, as well as the various states that we provide service in. But for those of you who may recall the days when we were Con Telephone, or GTE, or for those of you who can go from the Monroe, southern part of the area, when we were Highland Telephone, those are all some of our original companies. And I don't think there's anybody here that can go all the way back to 1895, no.
Mr. Massey can.
Even, yeah.
As soon as you said it, as soon as you said it.
That's where they went, right? 1895 is when Frontier Communications was originally incorporated as the Orange County Telephone Company. So, that's a little bit of our background and our history. And while we may have changed our name over the years, and some of our corporate structure and service areas, we've also changed the products and services that we offer. So, it's no longer just the phone company. We now provide internet, big data pipes, and tonight, we're going to talk to you about our newest product that we're offering, which is our video product. Some quick facts about the company as a whole. You can see that we're an S&amp;P 500 company, Fortune 1000. We do pride ourselves in providing communication services throughout America, including our suburban and rural communities as well. Currently today, we serve 29 states, just a little over 28,000 employees across the country. And again, there's our revenue numbers, our New York State headquarters, for New York State is in Rochester, New York, and our corporate headquarters is across the border in Connecticut. But tonight, we want to talk to you about our video product and services. So, first, I'm going to ask if Jack Phillips will join me. Jack is going to talk a little bit about our history in terms of how Frontier Communications came into this product, what we experience, what background we bring to it, and we'll talk a little bit about the product and service that we're looking to feature here.
Good evening, members of the common council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about this. We're really excited about it, and appreciative of you taking time to listen to our presentation, and hope that you'll move forward with the franchise approval. Just a little bit of background in terms of our background in providing video service. We do offer, today, we're the eighth-largest video cable TV provider in the nation. We provide fiber to the home in the Seattle, Portland, Southern California area, also Fort Wayne, Indiana, and Tampa, Florida, using a fiber to the home. You may have heard Verizon's FiO service. It is FiO's service. We also have a fiber-to-the-node arrangement service that uses a platform where there's fiber out to a node in the neighborhood, and then uses existing copper out to the, from that node out to the customer premise. We provide that service throughout the state of Connecticut. And that's using not only the same type of network, it's also using the same software platform, as well as the same head-end that we are using for serving the state of Connecticut. We also have rolled out Vantage TV recently in the Durham, North Carolina area. We're in the process of rolling that out in South Carolina, Ohio, the South Metro Twin Cities area, the Southern New York area. And I would mention that this is the first public hearing we've had in the Southern New York area, and appreciate moving that along quickly. And we're also meeting with members of councils in the greater Rochester area, the Finger Lakes area. Just an overview of the product itself, a little bit small here, but it is an IPTV-based service. It rides on the IP network that we have in place today, and we will not have to go out and tear up streets or disturb rights of way. We'll be able to provide service using the existing infrastructure that's in place. We'll be replacing cards and electronics within our central office location, as well as the nodes out in the field. But the good news is, we won't be disturbing the public rights of way or people's yards. As I said, it does ride over an IP, an internet-based protocol network. Some of the core features of the product, it offers standard definition, high definition, and ultra-high definition service. It is a superior, high-quality digital, digital quality picture. One of the things I really like about it, it is Wi-Fi enabled, meaning that the first set-top box in each home is wired to our network, but you can have an additional three set-top boxes that are Wi-Fi enabled within your home, meaning that you don't have to have wiring into the second, third, or fourth room in the house that have cable TV service, which, if you're like me, have an older house that doesn't have wiring to all the rooms, it's easy to get service by just moving your set-top box. It provides live TV. One of the things that's nice, if you've used satellite service, there's a little bit of latency or lag in switching channels. There's no latency or lag. The picture is there immediately. In fact, with some of the, with some of the features within our interactive guide, and I'll get to that in just a second, it actually will provide picture-in-picture, so you can actually see what's on the next channel before you actually switch channels.
Did I? I just switched them.
This is an example of the equipment, the set-top box. And I mentioned that before, one is wired, the others are Wi-Fi enabled. The main one that's wired is the real central control of the network. That's where the DVR capability is. It has up to 370 hours of recording capability. You can record up to six channels at a time. I'm not sure why anybody would do that, but I do understand that their households, they do do that. This is just some screenshots of what the interactive channel guide looks like. I mentioned before, it has instant channel change. It has multi-view, the seconds, the second picture there shows a screenshot of multiple channels. You can watch six channels at once, so that you can pull up the channel that you want. You can maybe switch back and forth, see what's on one, and it's interesting you switch on that. We also have video-on-demand, a very large interactive video-on-demand library. There are interactive applications, including weather channel. You're able to play games. Also connects for, you're able to do home shopping through the network. I mentioned before, the bottom left there, the whole home DVR, it's one set-top box that does all the recording, but controls all the set-top boxes in the home. There's a video visual guide that will provide a prelook of what the channels are prior to switching channels. And we have some companion services, like Netflix, that rather than changing the port or the video screen you have to go to Netflix, you're able to go to a channel, I think, at least in Durham, North Carolina, I think it's Channel 4001. If you go to Channel 4001, it brings up your Netflix guide, so you're able to go to that channel, and then go into the Netflix application. And as I mentioned before, it's wireless within your home. This is a little bit more of this little better view of the visual screenshot. You can, when you're switching through channels, it'll show what's actually on those channels before you switch. Another example of channel peaks.
Literally channel peaks.
Channel peaks, yep. It also has a unified search, which means that you can go in, in this example, typed in the word iron, and it will go out and search all the current channels that have either iron in the name of the programming, or iron in the name of the actors that are in the movies or on the channels. And it'll bring up a selection of those. You can then click on the one that you want to watch. This is another media list. It shows the video-on-demand library, again, very rich graphics. I mentioned the over-the-top application. You can go to a channel to bring up your Netflix, and then go to your Netflix interactive guide.
Yep, thank you. So, again, just to kind of highlight very quickly, some of the elements that we feel Frontier is bringing to the table here. First and foremost, we are looking to provide some level of competition in terms of video product and services. We feel it is a very, very strong product that Frontier Communications is bringing in terms of a video product, and as I said, it will bring competition into this product place. To join me now, Sue McDermott, our engineer. We'll kind of talk a little bit in terms of what we have, if there's any questions, in terms of the actual installation, what we are looking to do within our network. The other piece I'll just highlight is that this is also an opportunity for the city to receive increased franchise fees, because you'll be receiving franchise fees from Frontier Communications that today we do not provide, because our video product is the satellite product. So, we'll bring additional franchise fees to the table. We'll also have additional peg fees that we can also bring to the city council.
I think it was already mentioned, but I'm going to mention it again. What we're planning to doing is utilize our existing facilities that are currently in public right-of-ways. So, again, all the network augmentations and upgrades that we will generally be doing will be occurring in existing buildings and existing cabinets, for the most part. There will be no upset to the public at all. Okay, so what we see here on the screen right now is the City of Middletown coverage area. We actually took this map off the county map, so that we could actually look to see what the city outlines were. The yellow area shows the City of Middletown, and the darker yellow area also shows the City of Middletown. Also on there are all of our central offices and all of our nodes that will currently be supporting video deployment today. We've drawn polygraphs or polygons around those serving areas to just highlight our coverage. As you can see, the Middletown area, basically about 75% of the City of Middletown will be covered with our video product. The areas that may not be covered with it are some industrial areas, such as out on Highland Avenue Extension. There's some industrial areas or buildings out there that will not be covered, and some of the Dulson Avenue, Dulson Avenue, excuse me, area will also probably not be covered.
With the initial deployment.
With at least the initial deployment, true. The initial deployment that we're hoping to build will be over the next year.
If there's any questions?
Any questions from the public? Come on up.
Hi, Charlie Clark, 23 Richmond Place. I looked through the documentation that was online, searching for two little words, internet and fiber optic. And I didn't, I see that they're sort of there, but I wanted to ask more firmly, will this have any effect on the delivery of Frontier internet? I have a vested interest in this, I should say, you know, because I have a small, ensi position in Frontier stock, and I get my internet through Frontier. So, that's my question.
So, I know exactly where you live, because my brother actually lives on the same street as you. So, I can tell you that without a doubt, high-speed internet is available today on your street. You do have the capability today of getting up to at least 40 meg's of service. As far as the video deployment goes, it is a different platform that we will be putting you on, but the delivery medium is going to be the same. Does that answer your question?
Not exactly. In other words, if, once this is done, would I be able to, would I be able to get fiber-optic access? Oh, I'm sorry, you can't hear.
Broadcast, this is being broadcast live.
I know, I'm just not good for television. Okay, my question is, would I be able, after this is done, to get fiber-optic access, assuming I want to shell out the money for it?
Okay, so.
Internet.
Yep. So, the initial deployment on this product is over a copper-twisted pair. We do have some areas that we're building fiber-to-the-home today. Your area may Your area may be considered for it, but I cannot guarantee that, so the delivery medium will be copper, as a general deployment, for initial rollout.
Anyone else from the public?
And just to clarify that fact, that initial copper deployment is not to the nodes, that's just into the customer house.
Yes, fiber to the nodes.
Fiber to the nodes, copper to the house.
Any questions from the council? Alderman Witt?
Thank you. I know you mentioned trying to, hoping to go through existing locations, but are there any startup costs for the city?
None at all.
Okay. Another one. Let's say this happens, and I have a problem with my box and my remote and/or whatever. Where am I taking it? John Street? Because that'll be a concern people will have, where to take that.
At the moment, you'll be calling in to our customer care center, and we'll be deploying So there will be no need for you to personally bring it in. We will deploy our technician to your site, if it's necessary for us to physically do a repair onsite. Otherwise, a lot of what will happen is actually they'll remote into the device if it needs to be reset, for example.
But remotes kind of go crazy all the time, so someone's going to bring a remote?
We will either be delivering, if there's a remote control, or it'll be mailed out to you, sent out.
Is there a charge for that?
Not necessarily at the time that we set up the service. Not if it's our equipment that's at fault.
Alderman Massey?
Staying on that, will the person be deployed from Middletown to come out, to service our, if there happens to be a problem?
Correct, yes.
So there won't be a delay in time?
No, we are training our local workforce to be servicing this equipment locally.
And I do have one other question. You said that 75% of the city would be covered, and then you happened to mention Highland Avenue Extension, of which I happen to represent, and it's not all industrial out there. There are residents, and will they not be able to?
What we are looking at initially is the initial equipment, and what we've identified is where we will be installing and setting up the service within the first two years. We do anticipate that as this product is more and more successful, we'll continue deploying it out to more and more areas.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. When you say you won't be, and we welcome the competition, I think most of Middletown would, but some specific questions. When you say you wouldn't be tearing up any infrastructure, are you, to actually get the signal and what you're offering to the house, you'll be coming through existing phone-line connections, the wires that are already there, that Frontier already has?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. The additional augmentation will be actually in electronics, in certain cabinets, also use the term nodes, and of course, our central office. But these are devices that are already today fiber-enabled, back to our office, so we would use whatever current connection there is from that device to the house, to the customer's house.
Okay. You mentioned your ability to offer the current public access channels, and you say that you deliver the signal from the source of that signal. You would pick it up and then relay it to your customers. Does that mean you would need a box here in City Hall to broadcast Channel 20, where we already have a box?
Go to Jack.
Yeah, well, most likely, we would pick it up at this location. We do have, as a second entrant into the market, we do have the option of going to Time Warner and accessing the signal from them. And we, what we've been doing in other cities that we, in Minnesota, we're looking at this, we're actually working with city staff to find out which is best for both them and us. And in some cases, we've gone direct to the municipality to get the signal. In some others, we've had the, it's been a little more centralized, and we've gone to the incumbent, we have a request to the incumbent cable provider, which we have a right to do under the FCC rules, to access content from them. So I think the answer is we're flexible, and I think we'd probably have facilities, sufficient facilities, to be able to do our work.
Franchise fee, I don't know who this would be to. Franchise fee, you don't, is left blank, you don't specify. Would that, as a percentage, would that be the same as, the same 5%?
Correct.
That we're currently getting with Time Warner?
It would. Be exactly the same, including, and both the franchise fee and the PEG fee.
Okay. Now, are you also offering additional PEG channels that, besides carrying the channel we already have, you say you meet the same requirements for the public educational government channels? Those are your own channels, or your requirements would be to use the channels that Time Warner has and rebroadcast those?
We will use, if the question is whether we have our own Frontier channel that broadcasts our own content, we don't do that today. It is something we're looking at, but we will have all of the PEG channels for surrounding communities. One of the things that we're looking into is, I think you're, is Channel 20. There is an issue of, you know, channel lineups maybe not matching up. We may have another nearby community that has another channel on 20. One of the things that we may end up doing is use a drop-down box, that you go to a PEG channel, and it has a menu that you could watch multiple, you could watch nearby communities as well. But that, I think, will depend on what PEG channels that some of the nearby communities that we're working on agreements with have as well, but you'll certainly be able to get those that cover this area.
Okay. I mean, our Channel 20 here is the educational governmental channel, and, you know, it's important to people in Middletown. I know Channel 23 is just public access, but it would be important that you be able to carry that, I believe.
Sure, that would be considered a PEG channel that we would be required to carry as well.
The, I don't know who to ask this, but perhaps Mr. Gertin, because you spend a lot of time talking about the company background and people in the company, and I don't need to be reassured about that. We know Frontier is a good, substantial company. But you spend a lot of time talking about level playing field and build-out requirements, and saying that New York state law is almost certainly preempted where it has these requirements that you serve everyone after a certain amount of time, but you say that most of the rulings uphold the federal preemption on that. And Mr. Gertin, did you have any opinion on that? Because that's, it's certainly a lot of the pages of the description leading into the contract. Is that going to be an issue?
Well, what's your particular concern on that? That they're not going to mirror what we already have with cable?
No, that the contract go through and that it not be a problem, because otherwise, there wouldn't be all these pages insisting that it's not a problem. Are we comfortable with that it's not a problem?
Well, we haven't really started the review of the contract yet. I think the council's, you know, we wanted to hear what's going on here at the public hearing, we wanted to see the presentation. I think some of us have already seen most of it before at the Board of Estimate, but this is the first time it's coming to the public. So now, to the extent there are any questions, any concerns, we can raise them, but essentially, I think what's going to happen is what we're seeing with cable, as far as the benefits of the city, the payments, things of that nature. We're going to be able to retain that. I'm not sure that we can get much more, but certainly, we have to look at that contract and go through it. So all of the things that you're raising are things that are legitimate, and they're going to be bound by any of the rulings that have come down beforehand.
Okay.
Does that answer that?
Yeah, I think it does. Okay.
I can maybe add just a little more to that. Yeah, we do, in the application, describe the preemption the FCC has had. As Deb described, we do have actually pretty good coverage in the first year within the city. The other thing that may provide some comfort is that New York is very unique. I think it's the only state in the country that has this sort of two-step process, that we have to get both the municipality approval, as well as the state approval. And that's certainly one of the things that the New York Public Service Commission looks at, and is a safety net, I think, in terms of addressing that issue. They have had some cases that have, there've been other providers, second providers, entering markets that have provided less than full coverage, and they have gone through sort of an equalization process. One of the things they've recognized is that the incumbent has all the customers today, and it's a little more difficult for the second provider. So they do take, I think, that into consideration, but the commission will most certainly look at that issue as well, if that provides any comfort.
Okay, I think you make that case well. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the council? Okay, do I motion to close the public hearing? Alderman Massey, second of all, all of our consumers, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's now closed. Mayor?
Yeah, just to add one point also, if they're not providing all those services, they're not going to get many customers. They're not replacing Time Warner. They're going to be competing with Time Warner, so I think the competition will be great for city residents, and we'll have a choice in not only cable, but, you know, you also have a satellite option, too. So, and we're also going to be getting our revenue from Frontier, similar to what we get from Time Warner. Two issues I want to talk on. First is the fireworks in our repeat, our near-repete of last year. Wasn't as bad, but it was bad. Thankfully, the state legislature has changed the, what I consider to be a very poor law, and we had a big debate about it last year. We were able to convince the county executive, and Jeff Berkman, our local legislator, worked on it also, to have the county request home role legislation from the state that would allow the three cities in Orange County to opt out of the fireworks. The ability, aid to sell and to, for people in our communities to use them. We, it passed late in session, so it hasn't, as of last week, didn't go over to the governor's office yet, but we're assuming that as soon as it does, it will be signed, and we will then begin a local law process to opt out for next year. We did have an awful lot of police on throughout the weekend, including last night. I know the numbers from Saturday night, we did make 11 arrests for illegal fireworks, and I didn't get the numbers from the rest of the weekend, but we will be providing them to you when they're available. So hopefully, this is the last year of that little horror that we've had, and we'll be deploying more officers next year. The chief is already working on a plan for next year, and we'll hopefully have a quieter city and a less smoke-filled city next Fourth of July weekend. On our fireworks that we did at Davage Park, you know, and we do understand that people like to enjoy them on the Fourth of July holiday, and so we did provide an excellent show. The Maria Bruny, the Community Development Office, did a great job for the whole weekend, opening with Jimmy Stir on Friday night, and then the Stars and Stripes up at Davage Park. And we had a huge crowd, probably the biggest crowd I think I've seen so far, and so we are going to repeat that again next year. And also, I know Alderwoman Ram Cassoon is working on, and I think has received contributions, that we're going to be able to repeat the fireworks on Crime Night Out, and I'm sure she'll touch on that, which is the first Tuesday in August, correct? Only one other issue I want to touch on, which you, I'm sure many of you have seen either in the media or have spoken to the police department. Last night up on Oak Ridge, we did have a shooting. It was part of a Fourth of July party that's similar to other parties we've seen in the county and in the area, where a bunch of young people getting together, drinking, and doing things that really, really flying in the face of logic, why somebody at a party would start shooting a gun at somebody else. We had three people that were hit, none are life-threatening, thankfully, but we are, the chief has been in since, I think, 3:00 this morning. They've been doing their investigation. We are looking at a few issues. One, in addition to the criminal investigation, we are also looking at the social host law, which was recently passed by the county. We have reason to believe that there were people under the age of 21 there, at least based on the initial reports, so we are pursuing that avenue as an avenue of prosecution. Second is that the owner of the property, who did move out in 2014, never secured the proper rental permit and never filed the appropriate papers with the city. So we will be prosecuting the lawyer, I mean, the owner of the property also, in city court, and that will subject them to fines that I believe are up to $1,000 a day, possibly, from $2.50 to $1,000 a day, depending upon how long this property has been rented without a permit. I can tell you, and I know I've been in communication with the second ward alderman and the council president, that for the past few weeks, that we have had a problem with this house. It was under the police supervision, they were watching it. There were numerous neighborhood complaints, nothing of this sort, of course, but it was a lot of noise, a lot of parties, just a lot of inappropriate behavior throughout all hours of the night. The police department was checking it on a routine basis throughout the night. They were, I believe, almost every two hours, or even more frequently than every two hours. They did check the premises around midnight, and since it's my neighborhood also, I did check probably a little bit before midnight, before I went in, and all was quiet. So we're assuming the party started later, and just an unfortunate thing, but we are pursuing not only prosecution of the, hopefully, of the people who did the shooting, but also the owner of the property, and if the social host law applies, to the tenants of the property. So I wanted to give you an update on that. And I believe that's all I have. The department has mostly touched on some of the other issues. The planning and building will be a big, big closing for us. It's $1.1 million that we're selling that property for, so we do have a deposit, the contracts are in, and we're hoping to close very shortly. Any questions?
Alderman Kleiner?
I have one question, Mayor, that people have asked me about the county courthouse, how that is coming. I know we were.
The federal court, you mean?
The federal court, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're talking about the former federal court on South Street. As you know, we did secure a $2.7 million grant through the state of New York for that property. $2.2 million will be for the purchase of both buildings, the existing court and the vacant building next door. $500,000 will go towards the renovation, and the city committed $650,000 towards the renovation. When we were going through the process of preparing the requirements for the state to draw down on the money, and I believe in Sunday's paper, this was the biggest pork project, right, in the region?
Yes.
I guess we should be proud. I don't know if it's fair to call it a pork project when you're building a court. First, the state mandated the city build the second court. The state gets the revenues, majority of the revenues, from the city court. We let them use the council chambers in the interim, but they want a permanent solution, so they worked with us, and Aileen Gunther, our assemblywoman, secured a very nice grant. So I don't know if that's pork, we didn't go out and buy a.
It's a funded mandate.
Yeah, we didn't buy a boat with it or something, but, and she did an excellent job, and if we didn't secure that money, Middletown taxpayers would have been paying for the court, because as you said, it is a mandate. So as we were going through the process, the, apparently, when the property was renovated to become the federal court, there was an oil tank on the property, and the DEC flagged it. The oil tank was removed at the time, but the paperwork was not filed with the DEC, so it's still flagged. The property owner has contact, we contacted the property owner, and they have hired a firm, I believe an engineering firm, to do the soil testing and the verification that the oil tank is no longer there, and providing that documentation to the DEC. As soon as we receive it, we will then complete the SECA that Jacob is required to do, and the council's required to adopt, and then we'll be able to start drawing the funds, or at least going through the closing process on the property. So we're very close, it's all in the hands of Mr. Rosinelli now, to provide the appropriate documentation. And he tells us verbally and through his attorney that they have done the work, and that they will be forwarding the paperwork to us.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody for the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports of Alderman, Alderman John Fesswa.
Yes, thank you, good evening. The 4/4th, I just want a quick reminder, the 4/4th constituents' meeting is this Saturday, July 9th, at 10:00 in this chamber. Hopefully, I'll see everyone here. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have for this evening.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. I guess Alderwoman Ram Cassoon will mention this, but I'll mention it too. A week from tonight, we have Citywide Watch meeting. It is the meeting month, we're doing them every other month now, so we probably have a few things to discuss, and, and the 11th, we'll be having our Second Ward constituents' meeting. So that's all. Thank you.
Aldman Witt?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to congratulate everybody involved with the fireworks celebration and that entire day. It's, I watched them from my backyard, actually, the top part of it anyway, through the trees, and it's a great thing for the people of our city, and congratulations to Chris Brinkerhoff for getting the camp programs rolling and the pools. I mean, again, there's so much going on for the kids in the city, and it's a, it's a very good thing for them. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Ram Cassoon?
Good evening. I just want to put out a little reminder, I've only got this meeting and the next before Night Out, or, well, the Monday, but that's too late. So just start reminding everybody to mark their calendars for Tuesday, August 2nd. Night Out Against Crime will be taking place at Davage Park. Fun starts at 5:00 p.m., goes till 9:00, with fireworks to finish at 9:00 p.m. That is happening 100%. I'm very excited. I'd like to thank our sponsors once again for making Night Out possible. Without Middletown cares and our local businesses, it just doesn't happen. So my thanks to all of them. I'm sure I'll give a lineup before the, on TV before the event. You don't want to miss it, though. In terms of activities, there'll be plenty to do. We have Zumba, canine demonstration, video game trailer, inflatable dunk tanks, music, food, and of course, the fireworks, just to name a few. There is a ton to do, and I hope I'll see you all there, and that we have good weather. So mark your calendars for August 2nd, 5 to 9 at Davage. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Aldman Burr?
Yeah, under Parks and Rec, I'd like to thank Chris Staff and everybody involved in the celebration. It was a great show. And the PD for getting the traffic flow out. Within a half hour, we were all out and home. Thank you very much. That's all.
Aldman Massey?
I'd like to thank you for your presentation tonight. It's something that we certainly will look seriously at, and we certainly appreciate that you're coming into the Middletown area. Two other quick things. I want to thank you for the young gentleman that came up and spoke earlier. I do want to correct two things, if you don't mind, and I, and I certainly don't mean anything by this, other than to get the facts straight. One of the reasons the state police pulled out, they have a much higher threshold, criteria, and I think that's the reason that they left. I'm, I'm not sure it had anything to do with, they didn't think there was enough action on Highland Avenue, just that they're used to being out on the open road. And then the other thing that you mentioned, and I'm not sure if anyone else picked it up, I did, because I'm sensitive to it, because I happen to be the head of the civil service, is that I, I know you mentioned you wish that the Middletown police was more reflective of the community, and my answer to that, and my answer to that for the last 10 years that I've been in charge, I take that personal. I go out to churches, to other groups, when it's time that we're giving another police officer examination, and we had, I think, if memory serves me, 658 people take the examination. That's the first process. I can't make people take the test. If you don't take the test and score, you have no opportunity to get the job, and that's where that truly lies. You must, one, sign up to take the taste, take the test and score high enough. And there's what the problem has been. We do what we can, but I can't, once again, make, make you take the test. But thank you, I appreciate you coming up with your comments.
New business?
Ever resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to change the Tuesday, August 2nd, common council meeting to Monday, August 1st, not to coincide with the Night Out Against Crime.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Witt. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $6,060 within the senior 2016 budget to cover the cost of unemployment payments to laid-off employee.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Ram Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to accept donations in the amount of $450 from the Kiwanis Club in mid-city transit, in the amount of $270 for Recreation and Parks Department Summer Camp Scholarships.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, seconded by Aldman Ram Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr to authorize the treasurer to accept a donation of $5,000 from the ShopRite supermarkets to be applied towards the Stars and Stripes Celebration Weekend.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to authorize the mayor to sign and submit the product, project information sheet regarding SAM Grant Number 7581 for the Woolworths Project.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Burr, approving the mayor's appointment of Deborah Mills to the Middletown Police Commission, replacing Melissa McCary, who resigned the term and will expire 12/31/2016.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Aldman Kleiner?
I just want to thank Deb Mills for being willing to serve. Thank you.
What else? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
John Francois?[1723.11]